Safeway because as we know, that's their main entrance as well.
Okay, so I'll just jump into this really clear, really quick. Your volume might be a little high because we get echo. The drawing shows six car stack and not an eight.
Oh, six cars. Let's see, is that, pull it up here. Okay, I was going off of the one that was showing the two cars coming in. It was a different one. I apologize. So the site plan that you have in the package, that is the one that's working here.
Okay. Do you happen to have any information offhand as to the original design for the Lebanon store? What the stack is on that? Because I can tell you, it's usually 10 to 12 cars.
Yeah, so here, you know, I could get you that, but here's the thing with the Lebanon store. You know, the population in a two mile ring, that is what we base our decision on and to whether or not to go into a market. Is typically based on, you know, population. We've just now started going into towns that have a two mile population of less than 10,000, which is the case here in Sweet Home with just under, just 8,800 population within two miles. Lebanon's population is 21,000 within two miles. So it, you know, because it's got a lot more traffic, you're going to see a lot more people going through. The traffic counts in front of that store are over 20,000 a day. Here they're at 13,000 a day. We also have a store in Canby, Oregon. And, you know, that one I think is very similar to what we see here because, you know, generate, you know, the kids love us. And in that, in that location, the high school is close by to us, actually literally behind us. And in this location, the high school is pretty much a block away. So if it, if it performs like we think it's going to, we're going to see most of the, we're going to see a lot of, a lot of activity in our dining room, you know, for walk-in customers. Just because of the uniqueness and similarity of what we're experiencing in Canby.
So do any of the other commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
How many employees do you, excuse me, do you, are you going to have per shift?
In our peak hours, so our peak hours are from 11:00 AM to 1:30. And then again at five to eight. So during peak hours, the employees in the store is anywhere from 10 to 14. You know, it's going to vary. We've got a labor shortage right now, so if we're, if we're fully staffed, we would see 10 to 14 during those peak hours. And that would taper down to probably eight during off-peak hours.
The parking spaces, are the employees going to park in those spaces?
Uh, yes.
It looks to me like a lot of the parking spaces will be taken up by the employees. If you're at peak capacity.
Commissioner, if I may jump in real quick, I just want to make sure that we're, we're focusing on the actual application. The application tonight is only for the drive-through. The parking, our parking standard is met by this site that's elsewhere in the code. So if this was a restaurant without a drive-through, it would be a permitted use and there would be no discussion about it. In this case, it's just the drive-through that they're seeking a conditional use for.
Okay.
And I'll just, I'll just add to that, that, you know, the shopping center does have a reciprocal access agreement. So the parking is shared across the entire project. You know, and, you know, customers are going to take the path of least resistance. There's, there's not going to be anything for exclusive parking for Safeway. So if there's, if the parking does fill up in our parking lot, there's plenty of parking that abuts it along the Safeway side.
This is Jamie and at five o'clock between five and 5:30, there's going to be more than six cars in line getting dinner on their way home from work. Where will, where will those additional cars go? How do you see that happening?
Well, if there are six cars, they're either going to maneuver through the Safeway parking lot and in through that access area. If you, if you look close to the exit over on Main Street, the ride out, there's another, there's another cross-access easement, so they can loop through around the Safeway parking lot and come into the parking lot and then enter our driveway in that area. And we've seen that happening in other stores where we've had similar layouts like this. They, they'll, they find a way in.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wood. So just to clarify a little bit on the last question. So what you're saying is if there is more than six cars, so, because the seventh car will overflow into the driveway. You, you imagine or your plan is that to route traffic around, around the parking lot, so they would, so they would line up across your parking lot in front of the parking spaces that you have there. Is that the flow of traffic that you would imagine when there's a backup at the drive-through? Because that's really our concern, where that traffic's going to go? And if it's going to be blocking parking spaces or the ingress there?
Right. Now, you know, the customer, like I said, things just kind of happen intuitively with the customer. And if they can't get in, they find a way in. We can't, we can't actually direct the customer that way because that's not our property. So we would not be able to implement any kind of controls like that. You know, when, when the development happens, you know, John is going to be demolishing both of those buildings. And, you know, the customer will then have the ability to access on that second access point on 15th Avenue and even loop around that building pad. If, you know, and I think that's going to be happening in the first 30 days. The first 30 days, we will have a lot of traffic. I mean, that's with any new opening, that's what you experience. So considering that that building will be demolished and probably not be developed for, you know, I don't know, John, when are you planning on developing that? Probably going to be at least another year, right?
It would be, yeah, it's going to be a matter of getting Taco Bell in there. And that was my, you know, that's, Taco Bell is actually going to make that, that back parcel much more marketable. So, yeah, that's why that, that building is coming down. And so we will have that, that area available also. And just kind of on a side note, until it does get developed, because we do have a cross-easement in place, the gentleman brought up the issues about inside Taco Bell and the number of spaces. We can certainly put some employee parking on the backside if we need to at that point in time. I know that's not an issue that we're addressing here, but I just thought I would let you know that.
So really quickly, I just want to kind of address, I know, John, you're probably familiar more with the goings-on in Sweet Home during the summer. The activity, the traffic flow, where I don't think population is an issue as far as when you're, when you're thinking of traffic flow. I think this Taco Bell could probably out, outperform Lebanon's Taco Bell quite easily with basically the last city before you cross the pass, the first city when you come back. People going to the lake. So I think entertaining an idea where you can increase the stack in the driveway would be immensely popular. Safeway's already a train wreck at dinnertime. Would you be opposed at all, and this is just me thinking out loud, if we oriented the Taco Bell, if you oriented it in a different manner, say, parallel to Main Street, and that would give you all the drive, similar to the way McDonald's is set up, all the drive along Main as it bends back around 15th and then comes to the entrance off of 15th?
Well, I can, I'll have David jump in here because he's been involved in the site planning. And I think that we have gone through probably 10 different iterations of trying to find the site plan that would work for us operationally as well as fit on the site. You know, unfortunately, in order to operate our business, you know, the building size has to be what it is. The drive-through lane has to be the width that it is. And honestly, this is, this is, uh, this is really the only plan after we've evaluated everything. We would have been happy to do that, to find something that would have worked that way. But it's, is at this, at this point, we've gone through and exhausted every option. And this is the site plan that Safeway has approved. And I don't, don't know that they would, they would approve it if we changed anything at this point. It took us literally 18 months, just simply because they were very busy with the pandemic. Was not very responsive. So we finally, we finally got their approval. I just don't know that they're going to go through this with us again. And I don't know that there's anything that we can do with the, with the parcel size that we are working with other than what is shown. In fact, we actually, we actually, we actually decided, you know, probably, John, what was it, three months after working on it? We said, we, we just don't think it's, uh, it's going to work. And then we went back to the drawing board with a different architect.
Right. We did spend a lot of time on getting, getting this to work. We also have a fire hydrant and then we have storm water lines and sanitary lines that, that we needed to avoid. We looked at different plans. We had this laid out a little bit differently before. You guys came back to us and asked us not to be on that fire hydrant. So this is one of the reasons that we laid this out as we did. It was a tight fit. It was not an easy fit.
This is Commissioner Jamie again. I'm, I'm just kind of doodling on my drawing here. And I would probably say at peak times, even during lunch and dinner at five, I would say 10 cars is probably conservative. Could you describe to me where those cars are going to be lined up at?
Well, they're, they're going to queue where they're going to queue. I don't know that there's going to be 10 that's going to be coming out, outqueuing at any given time there. Like I said, I think there's a, there's a lot of customers now that we are finding. More and more people are using the app and pre-ordering. And there's parking spaces for them to come and pick up their, walk in and, and pick up their food and walk out. You know, that's just, that's just what we're seeing now is it's, it's more and more increasing. Increasingly, we're seeing the, the pre-orders taking place, so that gets them through the drive-through much faster.
So when I'm coming home from work, I'm not going to want to park and get out of my car and go in and get my meal. I would probably go through the drive-through. So, you know, I'm older, so. But also if I parked and there was stacking and I wanted, was in a hurry to, because I did the app and I was in a hurry and I parked and then I get blocked in and then now I can't get out.
Well, you know, this is, um, this is, this is a very small site, but it's very similar to most Taco Bells out there where you've got the parking lot and you have cars coming through the parking lot to get into the drive-through lane. That's a very standard layout in most of them that you will see. I do see, we do have one store on 164th in Vancouver. Kind of a similar situation where cars do flow out onto a street. That store does, you know, it's a great business. People continue to go there. It's been there for over 25 years. And, you know, if there's, if there's any kind of overflow onto the access road, cars will usually go around it.
Do keep in mind too, that you don't want to put that burden on your customers. Blocking the street from a drive-through is a $900 ticket. So you can ask several restaurants about that one.
This is Commissioner Wood. I'm wondering if you have a plan to put, like, is there a plan to put directional signs for the drive-through on the curbs? There are multiple curbs where I see there could be signs put up like at other establishments where they point people around to send them the direction you want them to go so that they don't end up lining on 15th Street, that they know that you want them to enter near the egress point and go through. And that would keep them from blocking Safeway customers from getting in and out of the parking lot. That's really our main concern. People who, well, at least mine, people who go to Taco Bell, if they stop and they park and they get trapped in the Taco Bell traffic, well, that's okay, they went to Taco Bell. But people who want to go to Safeway and get caught in the Taco Bell traffic trying to get in and out of Safeway. And there will be some of that, but I think what we're trying to do is avoid that as much as possible. Because Safeway is our main grocery store and it gets very busy. So that, that is really the, my main concern.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, this is, this is very common. Safeway, you know, being the, the anchor in many, many shopping centers across the country. You know, they're, they're used to having co-tenancies, you know, drive-throughs. It's just, you know, it, it helps them and it helps the other businesses as well because of the, you know, people coming in. You know, we just feel like, you know, we've, we've, you know, gotten their approval. And, you know, that, that would have been a concern of ours, of theirs, and they would have addressed that because they review these kind of tenants and developments, you know, all day long. So I kind of feel like if they were comfortable with, they know their store as well, that they, they would have, you know, addressed that concern.
I can appreciate that if Safeway thought they might be losing business because of traffic blocked. But because our small town and the limited availability of these types of areas and of grocery stores in our town, you know, they probably wouldn't lose money if people had to wait, but our citizens of Sweet Home would be frustrated. And so that's my concern. They want the extra business and want the extra traffic in their parking lot. But we just want to make sure that it works for the citizens of our city.
Understood. And I, I think that if it, if it did become, you know, a problem, I honestly think, given the, you know, number of stores that we operate, you know, we took a lot of care and gave a lot of thought to this, you know, with all the factors rolled together. And if it did become a problem, obviously, you know, the good thing here is, is that, you know, these two old buildings are coming down. John's not, doesn't have a solid plan for that back portion yet. So it could be a situation if it became a problem down the road, maybe that the, the drive aisle, the access aisle coming in off of 15th could be widened.
That's true.
Is the parking lot big enough running north to south for two-way traffic to get through there?
David or Jeremy, you guys worked on the site plan, but I think it does show two-way traffic here on the plan.
Does.
That dumpster is just a pad. That's not a, you can drive over that.
So the dumpster is that number seven?
It, it doesn't protrude, protrude into the aisle. It's just a, the concrete pad.
Yeah, seven's a pad, 22 is the enclosure.
This is Commissioner Journey. So it's helpful to hear some of your backstory about things that you have considered. I understand that your footprint is probably the most efficient for the space allowed. And I hear what you're saying. People figure a way to get around and get to where they want to go. And I just appreciate that you're open to hearing our concerns because I'm pretty sure some of what we predict will happen. And I hope that things can be worked out without a pedestrian having an accident or a car inadvertently being thumped or bumped, et cetera.
Well, this is me, Commissioner Parker. I'm just, I was, I guess I was just hoping with the continuation of this hearing that we were going to see other options and design possibilities for a parking lot. And unfortunately, it's the same drawing. So I was, I was hoping that we could have had some options.
Yeah, as, as I said, we've gone through and I'm, we're happy to supply you, you know, all the other iterations we went through. But as David pointed out, you know, with all the utility lines that are running through the property right now, including the fire hydrant, it's, you know, we had to work around those, those lines as well. And if the site is just, it's just not, you know, I mean, if we're looking at a new site today, we're probably going into, you know, 30,000 square feet, and I think this site is just, just under 28. So we're, we, you know, we kind of worked and laid it out with, with what we had to work with.
And commissioners, if you look at your image, C1.2, that shows all of the different utility lines and whatnot going across the properties.
I don't think I have 1.2.
Yeah, so C1.2, it's not in your packet?
No.
Actually, if you look at the site plan, you can kind of see the diagonal dotted. It's kind of faint, but you can see the diagonal line that's coming off of 15th.
C1.3 should also have the utilities of, you have that one.
So like one of them is here, but that's closer to the adjacent property than it is to Main Street. But there's one going right under the, the new building anyway. Oh, yeah, sorry. I guess what I'm seeing is there's a, there's a, a line running directly east to west. And then there's the easement coming off the north edge for the PUC. And then there's just the small one across the corner, the fire hydrant.
A lot of, there was a lot of back and forth with, with them previously on the, the number of parking spaces and making sure that they could meet the, the parking requirements. And so there, there are, there are a number of requirements they're trying to make work with this site. We can confirm that we've been back and forth with them on, on a number of these issues. And so I'm, I really don't, don't think that there's really an alternative for this site, given all the constraints that are on it.
There certainly is a big opportunity with the develop, with this, with the parcel to the north. When that gets developed, certainly a lot of opportunity there to correct anything that might be a problem here.
I guess it's just me doodling because it's what I always do. But I think turning, turning the orientation of the building so it's more lengthwise, parallel with the highway, seems like you could get a 10-car stack and still solve all the traffic flow issues and not go over any of the utilities.
There's, and without Joe being here, so I can't speak for him. But I know in some of our pre-op meetings that we've had with these guys, you know, there's also different buffers that have to be followed also between the buildings and the, you know, so we did go through with them and their engineers and their team. And again, this is one of the only scenarios, the layout is one of the only scenarios that would have worked for all of their criteria besides just having Safeway approve it. But we all went through the, we've seen a couple of different versions of this. And so this, this was the, the layout that worked with all of the criteria.
Do any of the commissioners have any further questions for our applicant? Have any questions? No? All right. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing for discussion amongst the commission at 7:05. Thoughts?
We've been handed something that's done. And there's really not much room, given the other players, Safeway, John Whitaker, you know, utility access is six tenths of an acre. And I think we're just all expressing some frustration with not having the ability to have more of a say, but I don't think we have a say unless we just want to not approve the application. And I'm not sure about the wisdom of that. I'm sure about the wisdom of that, actually. And if we would approve it, we all have reservations about approving it, so I don't know really what else to say. What's, what's the greater good?
Can I, can I ask a question about that ingress on 15th Avenue? There is a mention that in the future, it could be expanded to a wider ingress. So maybe two in, two out to make more space for that. Whose role would it be to take on that, that project? Would it be the property owner?
That's a private, yeah, that's a private driveway into, into the development. And so the, if there was any change to that driveway in the future, they, they certainly would need a city right-of-way permit. But it's the parcel to the north that essentially would be giving up something to add to the widening of that driveway.
I was just looking at the attachment A. It shows that the property line goes all the way over to where those parking spaces are pulled in, which is, which gives, which kind of widens that area to create. Even just a two-lane in would kind of help ease our concerns about backflow of traffic and keeping people stuck on 15th trying to get into Safeway.
So are you, are you, you're thinking then of basically three lanes, two lanes in, one lane out?
That's what I was thinking. Well, and it doesn't necessarily always have to be dedicated, but it is there during those peak times that we know are going to happen.
With delineation for drive-through.
Yeah, because I mean, the Dairy Queen next to it has a line down to 15th Street. You know, often, almost every night. So we can assume that Taco Bell will look similar.
I guess that's my major concern. I mean, we've got a lot of people coming through town, not just the people in here. Our current census is closer to 10,000 than it is eight. That's an old number.
Well, the eight they used, they were, they were talking about the distance from the restaurant, not, not the population of the city.
Within two miles from it.
I mean.
Depending, yeah, it depends on the numbers you're using, yes.
So.
So that, that kind of, that kind of widening would be dependent on the, the parcel to the north. And so it's, it's not something that could be used as a condition of approval on this particular application. But it's something that we would basically be advising the property owner to be aware of for future development, that when the time comes to develop that property, we'd be keeping an eye on what the traffic in and out is and be looking for any mitigation of the, of issues that crop up.
But at the same time, once this is a done deal. But at the same time, once this is done, then there's nothing upon them to fix it.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, there's not, it's not like there's a, there's something that we could. There, there may not be something that we can require of them, but keep in mind also, they're, they're losing money every time people avoid the drive through because it's over overflowing. There's plenty of people who see a drive through going out onto a public road and they just avoid the drive through and don't go. And so there's, there certainly, it's in their interest to to correct any problem like that in the future. Even though we can't necessarily force it, it would be in their interest to do so.
Right.
Correct.
I understand that, but at the same time, if the stack comes through the parking lot, then you lose those parking places because people can't get in or out of them. And so then you've lost those, that's my concern.
And then the mobile app issue is is a non-issue. I guess I was just really hoping to see an alternative or another option. I really do think you could easily orient the building parallel with Main Street, create a ten car stack, have all your ample parking, not be over the easements.
The the issue being that the the those are, well, right, but that's, that's involves engineering drawings that were, that aren't really our place to review in this particular scenario.
Yeah, and we tried, we tried different ways to to locate this building when we went through the original, you know, planning commission.
Public comment, sorry. This portion of the meetings closed to the public.
Yeah, sorry about that.
The commission itself. If anybody else doesn't have any questions or discussion, look for a motion in regards to this conditional use application.
Do we want to open this up for rebuttal or any comments from?
Typically rebuttal is for the public hearing portion, if there's any, any, any party coming in opposition. So there, there's not normally rebuttal for the, or any comments that the commission makes. If you have additional questions for the applicant, you can reopen the public hearing.
Would you like that? No, all right.
So this is Commissioner Wood. And I think I would like to make a motion to approve the application, see twenty two dash zero three, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of staff court, the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and just vote, you want to do the roll call?
Probably a roll call on this one.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Oh.
Yes.
Three to two vote, motion carries.
All right, so that concludes our our public hearing portion. So thank you guys so much for your time and your investment in the community, and I hope it works out.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, yes. All right, so at this time, as other commission business, we're going to go over to Angela for staff updates on planning projects and our code revival.
Yeah, I'll start off soft. Okay, so we couple of things, I'll, I'll end on the the code process. Housing needs analysis project, we, we are getting that off the ground. The consultants are starting work on it. Typically, those kinds of projects include some sort of advisory committee, either one especially appointed for the project or just the planning commission. And so wanted to put it in, in, you know, get your thoughts on that if you would like to serve as that advisory committee for the housing needs analysis, or if that's something you'd rather a different, you know, a committee on its own take care of.
So what are the responsibilities, time commitments, time length, the process, et cetera?
It, it's it's basically a couple of meetings where the consultants present kind of their findings on the data and then gather input from the advisory committee on things that they may not have taken into account because they're not locals. It's not, it's not a huge amount of time. It's basically, I'd say probably two meetings that you that you'd have to attend for it. Those meetings, if you choose to have the planning commission just take on that advisory role, those meetings can just be during a planning commission meeting and it would just be handled the same way we handle any other application. So.
It seems like something that would be kind of in our best interest to do, and we seem to have a pretty diverse population or demographic here on that mission.
I mean, in, I'm obviously biased here. It certainly makes it easier because we don't have to go around looking for for folks to to serve in this capacity. I just didn't want to, you know, make any assumptions or overload you either.
Just don't tell my wife I'm on another committee.
It's, we can, we could hide it within the the meetings you normally have to go to.
When, when would this have to be completed by? So what's the timeframe?
Um, the worst, yeah, we're still pretty early on. Overall, the project shouldn't take more than six months, six to, I'd say six to nine months at the most.
By the end of the year.
Yes, by the end of the year, it'll be done completely. But when it comes to your roles as as advisory committee, it'd be a couple of meetings between now and the end of the year, basically. That could be, that would be scheduled at the same time that you normally meet anyway.
So we just either tie them in right at the end of a commission meeting.
Yeah.
Well, eventually there will be a public hearing on it. I mean, it's got to have a process just like anything else, so.
Sure, yeah.
I'm up for that.
Okay. All right, well, the consensus we're hearing is we'd like to just have the planning commission serve in that capacity and that works great for us. Let the consultants know. The firm is it's their names.
Somebody, somebody.
It's a, it's a planning firm. Yeah. They're I don't, I don't think they're out of, they're outside of Portland, basically. I mean, I pull up my last email on it.
I need my email so I can tell you who's on.
They're getting paid directly by by D L C D. This is a grant and we're not, we don't really have any of the fiduciary responsibility for it at all. So, yeah. Three J Consulting, they are are they? Basically between Portland, Portland and Salem. Other items are the draft code. So we have in your packet, I believe we have two of the articles with comments from both staff and from Walt Wendelowski, who's working on the code for us. And then since then, since you got the packets, we received the remaining two articles with his comments and revisions. And so we haven't really talked about what process you'd like to go through to to review those those comments. Essentially, we've, we've been through the draft the initial time and we, all the comments that you made and requests for changes that were made during that time, we've now put in track changes form in the documents that you've received. We can go over those one by one and consider those changes. And after which we then would have the public hearing to to rec, to formally recommend it to the council. And that process can take as as long or as be as short as you want. A couple of things that were, we want to get this done as soon as possible, but it's one of those things where you keep on seeing things that you would want to add in. And at some point, you just have to rip off the Band-Aid and say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and just finish this off. So so we have those comments for you to review. At the same time, we've been working with the Council of Governments and they've got some grant funding for housing, for housing planning, and they are doing code audit audits for all of the communities in their jurisdiction, where they basically look through all of their codes and find, find things that, or look for things that are keeping housing from being built or that are, that are a hindrance to, to usually things that are like a hindrance to density or something like that, that that makes housing more affordable. Now, those, the, we, we, since we're in the middle of our code change, instead of having them do a code audit on our existing code, we gave them the drafts that we had and had them do an audit of those drafts. And so I I have that document that I just received the other day, so it's not in your packet. But I can provide that to you as well, and those are changes to be considered essentially of whether you would want to add, make those changes in the, in the code. They don't necessarily have to be made. This is a, this is a planner's outside opinion of, well, these are the, basically what they're doing is they're looking at the Senate bill and the House bill that, that that require certain changes when you get to ten thousand, which we're probably going to hit next summer. And and so they they are using that and the administrative rules that have been developed based on those, those statutes. And they're reviewing the code with an eye for those things and the making recommendations of things that you would want to change to make sure you're in compliance. Again, this is their opinion of 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 that. And some of the, some of the corrections that I've seen, they're either kind of small or I'm not, almost not really worth discussing, or they're major and and you definitely want to do. But there's some things that where it's definitely in, it's somebody's opinion of it. So it's something you would want to not just rubber stamp. You, you definitely would want to have your discussion about it to see, are these things that we want to go ahead and change right now? Or you could kick the can down the road and say, we understand that these changes will mean to be made, and once the state requires it of us, that's when we will do it, which is perfectly acceptable if that's the, you know, path that you want to follow.
Well, I wouldn't mind any kind of outside assistance as far as maybe there's something that we're not catching or not seeing or not reading correctly, especially when you start throwing a bunch of legalese in there and and convoluted simple things. But at the same time, I mean, I guess it's great that they can put in their input and then we decide if we want to listen to it or not. I just hate to see, you know, the things that are needed for future expansion are decreasing all of our setbacks and and making it worse and worse and closer and closer. And then you end up like Albany where the roofs almost touch and.
There's going to be, I mean, there's going to be some of that, not all of it, but some. Some of them are are simply parking requirements. And and we're already addressing that with our, with our new code as well. So it's, it's something where I think the main thing we would want to know is how do you want to, do you want to incorporate that into our discussion of the articles that, of the the comments that we're already getting back? Or do you want to consider those separately?
How easy would it be to combine them?
What we probably would, if you want, if you chose to combine them, what we would probably do is I would, the, the, the format of the the memo that I've got basically goes through our code section by section. And I would just group them together in those articles and we would, and and I would just have in my notes have it, okay, this is where we would bring in this suggested change. So, so we could, we could do it at the same time. Not necessarily, no.
And we could assume that there are, there may be some substantive differences between Walt's comments and the Council of Governments comments, although it'd be great if they weren't different.
Yeah, I I did pass, I did pass that on to Walt as well to get his opinion on it. I haven't heard back from him yet.
Yeah.
And so, and that's something, and actually that was, it, it was a topic that we had already reached out to D L C D or that he had because we, we, one of the things that we asked of him was, okay, now that we want to be prepared for this, what's going to be required of us by the state? And it's, it's kind of awkward when you have these kind of planning rules that the state has gotten into. Planning is supposed to be, you know, all the way the laws are all set up, planning is a local decision. And yet we have state mandates saying what you have to do when it comes to our urban growth boundary and what we can, the different rules that we have in place. There, there's not really any enforcement mechanism for that. It's essentially the courts. And so the only way you ever basically, whether you do it or not, you run the risk of doing it and it's, do you want to get sued or not? And and you might get sued on a certain provision and you might not. It's, it's very, it's not something that you can predict. So it's kind of on our, it's almost like an honor system kind of thing where the state said, yeah, you better do this on your honor, do this. And and it's up to us when we, how we we choose to do that. And the only way to know for sure if we've done it is to, well, either we comply by the letter with what the state has said or we wait until somebody contests what we said and have the courts tell us.
Well, but the other thing is that we're, we're paying Walt. So, you know, my wish would be that he would know what the state wanted and he would see our our information and he'd advise us accordingly.
Yeah.
Because that's what we're paying him for. Without us having to take his comments and then, you know, sort of be the arbiter of both sides. And that's maybe unrealistic, but that would be my wish.
Well, I guess that's a good question. Would you like me to have, to make sure that before it comes before you that we get Walt to chime in on on these suggestions from the state?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we can afford it, I don't know how many more hours that would add to our.
To be honest, we, we haven't because of the long process we went through and reading through it, we haven't used a lot of Walt's time up, up until, until, you know, starting in February, basically.
Let's use the money.
I, so I, I wouldn't be worried about, about paying for Walt's time for this. It's, it's part of the project.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see him go through and match up his comments with what we want and with what the state wants. And then it comes together for us.
Okay.
It was fun the first time, it'll be fun the second time.
And it, but isn't.
Just to ask you, because we have another very full agenda, the first of April, we have another four conditional use applications coming up. So whether we want to do two meetings a month again until we get through this again, just so we can have a plan. And then if we, if I don't have something on the agenda, then to just let you know that we don't have anything on the agenda. Because I continually, and we're probably going to have some subdivisions coming up too. So it's, your meetings are going to be packed for a while. So there, we may have.
Able to zoom in?
Yeah.
I might be gone for the second one in April.
Yeah, the first one in April, that one, you have multiple applications for that one.
Second meeting in April is probably when we would aim to have discussion about the code.
Okay.
So April first is our, is the next meeting, that's a Thursday?
No fooling.
I'm just looking.
Heard of a lot of things get scheduled on April first this year, so a little leery of a few.
Oh, oh, April first is a Friday. So the first one will be April seventh and the twenty first. Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
I wanted to make a political joke.
I just wanted to make sure so I can.
On record.
Make till after the gavel.
Yes. So, yeah, so far, as far as planning updates, that's, there's a lot.
So what have we got coming?
I'm trying to think of all the different ones. Let's see, we have a home occupation conditional use. I've got a, should have written them all down. We've got a potential subdivision, but you probably won't hear that one until May.
There's one for the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, yeah, wastewater treatment plant, there's also one, so we have a lot. Oh, yeah, wastewater treatment plant. There's also one. So we have a lot here in Sweet Home. It's a large lot that we're going to divide it into a subdivision. However, probably two thirds of it ended up being wetland. So it's going to be a conditional use to allow a.
Townhomes, I think, or duplexes.
Because they can now only do three lots instead of a multiple lots. So that's one, that's a new one. You know, we haven't done that one very often. The conditional uses are all pretty straightforward ones. Boy, at least one subdivision coming up in May. We're hoping to have that finalized by the end of next week. So it can be on the main agenda. So.
And if I'm not mistaken, in the future state requirements, once we exceed 10,000, a duplex is allowed on any lot in a residential. So this one, while it's conditional use now, soon won't be.
Right.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So, like I said, we've got a lot of stuff. We were really busy doing plan reviews in all of our departments. So we've had, how many did we have coming? Twenty some, all at one time?
Oh, yeah, in building, our building department is swamped because the, the Mountain River subdivision that was approved last year, you know, they're done with all the street and everything. The lots are all ready to, to go. One developer bought 20 of them and then basically dropped off boxes of their applications all at the same time.
Just a bunch of boilerplate plants.
Well, yeah, they've got their plans, but they're, they're, this particular builder, the way they operate is they've, they've got a warehouse full of, of parts of houses essentially, and they've got the crews. And they just, they go in and they build a whole bunch all at the same time. And the Mountain River subdivision that's at 45th?
That's the one behind.
Forty fifth and Main, behind, yeah, behind O and M. And so they're, they're going to build, I mean, 20 of those houses are them. There's, there's a few more that are somebody else. And they're going to, from start to finish, I think they'll probably have them all up in, in less than nine months. It's going to be, it's going to, you'll see a neighborhood appear out of nowhere. It's going to be crazy.
Well, you won't because it's behind a building.
Well, fair point.
That's keeping us all because each of us has a piece of that that we've got.
What are we talking about sign code?
Illuminated signs.
When it, to get a permit.
Oh.
What initiates it.
That's, yeah. So along with the code, we, we had kind of avoided making any changes to the sign code because it was fairly recent. We've run into some issues with people asking for signs and our code, it's one of those things where you're like, well, like, it's not, I guess it's not quite as clear as it needs to be. Because it's, the language is a little bit loose on when you actually need a permit for a sign. And, and so it's, it's been a little bit difficult for staff to interpret. So we'll probably include that or try to include some of that in our code revisions that we bring to you at the second meeting in April to have some options for you to consider there. We haven't talked very much about sign code, but recently it's been, it's been an issue.
And it's, and there are some very, the criteria is clear as to what types of signs, what types of signs are not allowed. It, the only thing that it is missing is when, if someone's replacing a sign or putting in a new sign, when does it trigger a permit, a building permit to be, it doesn't say that. It just says, it has to follow a certain code, but it doesn't say when that has to take place. So if someone's replacing a sign, how much of it has to change in order for it to trigger a, a permit? And so there's some, it, it's caused some issues. And so we want to make sure we have a little bit clear, a little bit more clear direction in the code itself that, that triggers that.
Would that be kind of, if they were going from a static hand painted sign to an illuminated sign, that may require a permit?
Right. Well, that's, that's what's not clear is if, you know, suppose you have a, a exterior illuminated sign and the only, that, you know, the lights are on the outside pointing at something. And the only, and the only thing you're changing is just what there is, you're removing those lights and the, the part that they were pointing at has now become an interior illuminated sign, but it takes up the same exact space. Should that require a permit? And it leaves a gray area that's awkward for staff because, you know, there are some, some changes to this person's sign where it's very clear that, oh, that definitely requires a permit because you changed the entire technology of the sign. But then technically you change the technology of the sign when you go from exterior illumination to interior illumination, but it's not.
But it's still static.
Isn't a material change and it doesn't really, so that's, that's really what, it, it gives a bit too much discretion to, to staff, in my opinion. It's, I'm not comfortable with that amount of discretion because we get accusations of, of, you know, favoritism.
So we'd have to look at verbiage that would describe if it was a, a sign with motion or a sign that changes, or if it's just a stationary, doesn't do anything, but it's just lit up for different than the two.
We'll, we'll have, we'll put together some options for you to consider and, and include that as well. Anything else that we need to?
No, I think that's, oh, so as far as the comments, the memo that Blair got and the additional code, do you want those way ahead of time or just put it in your packet? Since we probably won't be talking about the April 7th meeting, I can just put them in your packets and you can take them home then.
Yes.
Yes, please. Easy. Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm giving you enough time to take a look at them. So, okay.
And if there's ever anything that you feel like you don't have enough time to review things and you, you know, feel free to let us know and we, we're happy to change procedure to make sure you get enough time to digest everything because some of these things are pretty lengthy. That's all we've got.
All right. Nobody's hiding anything else? Want to wrap it up? All right. So we're going to close the public planning commission meeting at seven, for March 20, March 17th. I don't even know what day it is. St. Patrick's Day. Maybe I celebrated St. Patty's before I came. No, I didn't.
Did you?
So I'll close the meeting at 7:36.
That was just with corned beef, right?
Yes.
That you celebrated.
Yes.
Not any kind of.
That's the only way I got through.
Not a stout.
Yeah. Oh, don't.